Congratulations.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, due to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Citizens, statements, questions?
Just come here, wait a moment.
Mr. Daniel.
My name is Richard Green. I live at Two Daniels Road in Mendon. And I'm here to ask if the town will consider passing a by law to prevent anybody in the future from owning a rooster. I've been in contact with the animal control officer, Mr. Sullivan. He tells me out of all the towns that he covers, only Mendon is the only town that allows anyone to have a rooster in the yard. We've had a problem where a rooster would crow all night, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, during the day. It just doesn't do when sun is coming up. So it's a nuisance, and why can't one neighbor have an animal that impacts how you're able?
Alright, so. During this, for the first time, I know we have our right to farm on a lot, which believe gives people the right to own fowl, right? So that's the first thing. So maybe there's that was that a planning board? Do you remember?
I don't.
Right to farm?
No, it's a by law.
They could have dismissed it enough. Acceptance of a national by law.
My only concern is, so you're saying that our animal control officer says we're the only town that he handles that that allows roosters?
That's what he told me.
So. What would what would we do with, what would we have on the roosters if every town in the Commonwealth didn't allow roosters? I guess, and maybe I'm being too broad. I understand the concern for sure, but if we have dogs that bark, what is that testing?
Yes.
What are they?
He can handle that. He can deal with that. You get a number of complaints, and that's what I call them. The complaint about a rooster. He told me he can't do anything about a rooster because we're an agricultural town. If chickens are okay.
If I can just interject, Mr. Green, essentially, and said exactly what essentially both of you said. First of all, you know, we passed the right to farm or right to farm town. I also remember there was a by law study committee, and at one point, discussion about actually having passing a by law prohibiting people from having chickens and roosters in an agricultural in a residential area.
Right, I remember.
And the townspeople, like I told you, need to vote it down.
Yep.
So we have brought this up before, but as I said, there is a process for an individual to bring to make a request to put something on on a town hall. You need 10 signatures for the annual town, or 100 signatures for a special town, which is a way to do it for next week. But that's the process. I mean, given that we studied it, the board could put it on there, but again, and I'm speaking just for myself. I'm hesitant to put it on there because we've been down this road before, and townspeople, and this admittedly several years ago. I mean, less than 10 years, and certainly more than five, that we brought it up. And the last thing on that is that I do, there is a rooster somewhere near my big street, and I haven't been looking for him. But I have been awakened at three in the morning by a herd, so I feel you can.
And it's not just the crow. It's the continuous.
Oh, sure.
And there's no snooze button on the roof.
Right.
Are they, are they just running kind of out, or are they in, are they inside?
But I, they're in a cage.
So, okay, only because I'm curious, could we maybe ask the animal, animal control officer to just join us, even if it's remotely at one of our meetings?
Sure.
Just to answer some questions so that I understand it better.
I'm pretty sure that, I'm surprised to hear that he said that because he handles Millville and Blackstone, right?
Yeah.
Unless they did it. Yeah, unless he did it recently. This had happened recently. Both of those towns had, were allowed to have free range chickens and roosters, but again, you know.
He told me it was six towns.
It does. That's it. We're in agreement.
It's my voice.
To Teresa Green, Two Daniels Road. We have a family that has chickens in the town of Blackstone. She is not allowed to have a rooster.
Oh.
So, and that's all we're trying to get, is no rooster. We don't like chickens. So if on the last time at the town meeting, it was chickens and roosters.
Well, I, you know, I don't.
You know, we just want to differentiate because we're not against chickens.
Sure, sure. Well, I know.
I mean, they're allowed to be.
If somebody that's breeding chickens, they need a rooster. So I think that I would be more apt to talk about something to do with keeping your rooster dry. Listen, if you want to have a rooster, you want it to grow, throw it in your basement all night. I mean, let it grow in your basement, not outside for everybody that's trying to sleep, right? So I think I'd be more apt to go down something than that, but you can't have, you've got to, you know, dawn to dusk, or, you know, dusk to dawn. The rooster has to be up inside and not, I'm not just going to cage it outside either, you know.
Well, you also have to factor, you know, that we do have poultry farms, at least one of them. So it's going to be some sort of exemption built in there about that type of activity.
Are you saying like a farm versus a residential area, etc.?
Yeah, I mean, the farm is a residential zone, so we have to, you know, kind of find that language to be appropriate.
I think we're trying to define it a little bit, and I think that we can probably.
Okay, so do I need to do anything at this point?
Hopefully, we can maybe talk to them.
Already sent the email.
We'll, we'll be on the next, oh, as long as.
I've read them to a coming meeting.
We'll be on the next agenda.
Alright, so just follow up with that.
Yeah, and then again, you can join through the link or come back.
In the tend to these, as I think we discussed, these agendas are at the end of mass.gov.
Yep.
So you can see the agenda when you escape.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to? That's me. It's Catherine on.
Yep, Catherine's here.
Yep.
Hey Catherine, how are you?
I'm good.
Great. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in joining the agriculture commission?
Sure. So I moved to Mendon a couple of years ago, and I've always been really big on agriculture. I've worked on dairy farms, beef farms, horse farms, with pretty much a lot of livestock. And I have also worked on vegetable farms, so I just have a wide interest in that kind of stuff and would like to be more part of the community and thought this would be a good opportunity.
Great. Questions from board members?
What do you think about roosters, Catherine?
I can definitely understand that they are obnoxious, so.
And always wonder, yeah, I'm kidding.
Alright, well.
That's the only question I have, but.
Catherine, I would just say thank you for stepping up. We appreciate that. We need more people to volunteer.
Yeah, not a problem.
Accept the motion.
I move to appoint Catherine Park to the agriculture commission for a term to expire June 30, 2023.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Feel free to stay on and listen. It's up to you. Okay, interview with finance committee members. And we folks that were interested, one of them has drawn their interest, so we have two openings on finance committee. And so I guess we won't have to make any hard decisions tonight, but I believe we have Michael Crager and Ronaldinho here. And I figured it'd be good to hear from them why they're interested in joining the finance committee and a bit about their background. So I see Michael has popped up. Michael, would you like to give us your background and why you're energized to join this important committee?
Sure. Apologies for not being able to be there today, but I have kids at home and wife is doing conferences for her school, so. But my interest in the finance committee has popped up as I've, as I've lived in Mendon and sort of watched my, my taxes go up over time and kind of go through some of the budgeting battles that we have in town with the school. I do have two kids in the school system, and as I dive deeper into things like school spending and town spending, it's a place that, you know, I've just, I've I've found interest in learning more, understanding more, and wanting to be a part of the conversation of how we can better things moving forward, both for the town, for the schools, and for everybody. You know, I think that I can bring value to the committee in some of the, some of the background that I have and the things that I do for my job. I'm a program manager at Bose, and I'm very familiar with generating, operating, running to specific budgets of, you know, the, the size that the, the town operates to, you know, so dealing with those types of, you know, monetary values and, you know, doing things like justification of capital expenses and how, how businesses need to operate, how we are working with suppliers and contractors and, you know, contracts and all those things I have, I have experience with. So it's a place that, you know, I've always been interested in numbers and managing budgets and, you know, trying to get good value for what we're spending. You know, there's a piece of this where, you know, I don't, I don't like my taxes going up, but I'm also not blind to the fact that things cost money. And we should be ensuring that we are getting good value for what we're paying in this town for everything that we do. And I'd like to be a part of the conversation, and that helps try to figure things out. That's best for everybody across the board.
Good. Questions from the board?
I don't have any questions. I was at the finance committee here, and I, you interviewed, so.
That is important to note that these candidates have been interviewed by the finance committee as well. I'm also familiar with Michael, so I have no further questions, but I will accept the motion.
I move to appoint Michael Crager to the finance committee for a term to expire June 30, 2024.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard.
Thanks, Mike. Welcome aboard. Three mics on the board, on the committee, I should say.
There's a whole nother problem.
Yeah, right.
Okay, next we have Ronald. Is Ronald on?
Yes, right here. Hi.
Hi, Ron. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Great. Would you like to give us a bit about yourself and why you're interested in joining?
Sure. My daughter-in-law and I had a conversation a few years back. She's actually the assistant town administrator to the town of Maynard. And we were talking about, you know, the different boards and so forth. And she just felt that, given the experience I had, I was on the condo board, we're actually up at a condo I have up in New Hampshire, and I was on the condo board there, and she said, you'd be a good volunteer for one of the boards in your town. And I thought of it after a while, and the finance board, I saw I had some openings. I've had some experience. I was on a medical board for several years back in the 90s, where we had a very large budget at the time. And then I was on my condo board at the inception, when we went condoed in 2000, and then again, for several years, just stepping down in 2015. But I know that, as my daughter-in-law said, it's very difficult for a town to be run without volunteers. And I never really gave it much thought until she went into some detail as to how much they rely on individuals in the community. So I just felt it was time for me to, to give back.
Great. Well, that really is how so many of us start off in town government, is just raising your hand to get involved and jumping in. So we appreciate that. Any questions?
I do not complete, uh, listening.
Yeah, I listened to. Great. Accept the motion.
I will do appoint Ronald to the finance committee for a term to expire June 30, 2024.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, the finance committee is full, right?
That's great.
You guys have, are you, so, just real quick, you can get sworn in, yourself and Michael, as soon as possible with the town clerk. Don't believe we're here tomorrow, no, or Friday, so maybe Monday, because I know that finance committee has a meeting on Tuesday, I believe. And I think that they'd love you guys to be there if possible.
They have a meeting, went the following Tuesday, the 23rd.
As well, but I think.
They've one on the 17th for STM.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And they have one for, which he probably wants to come to.
Yep, yes, definitely.
And they have one the following Tuesday.
As a matter of fact, just a note too, and you can reach out to the chairman, we'll also get you your emails all set up and all that. If you give me an email, I'll make sure I get it sent tomorrow. The the special town meeting may not have a quorum, so if you guys could, just because some other people are going to be away, so it might be helpful to for you guys to be there. They'll need a little help.
And you do get to those, those seats at the table.
Hey, give it front seats.
That's really why I wanted to do it.
That's what I think.
There's also, I believe, Jean has, you know, some, some stuff that came up at last night's meeting, and Jordan, you sent some stuff over about new, for new folks, so we'll try to get you all those documents as soon as possible, so that, that will, that'll help you guys too, just to kind of get acquainted with how things kind of run, some terminology, things like that.
So we should just reach out to the town clerk and try to get over to see her as soon as possible?
Yep, to get sworn in, yep. Monday, Monday morning, if that, if possible.
Okay.
Thanks, Catherine.
Those STM articles.
Okay, so this week, then last week, we've had multiple meetings with multiple boards talking about different articles, but ultimately, this is the board that needs to decide different amounts and which articles actually move forward or not for the STM.
Our cheat sheet.
No. Because our articles are, those are only three of the five that we need to talk about. So a couple of these are very, pretty easy, okay? As you know, last week, we certified free cash at $753,000. So my recommendation is to put $250,000 of that in stabilization, $100,000 of it, which is the limit in CapEx, and then $25,000 in OPEB. Does anybody have any thoughts besides that on those three? That would leave us with approximately, since I've adjusted down the amount for transfers, about $300,000 in free cash still available.
And that, that was a free, that was a free cash target. We're over target.
Correct. We are over target, and probably when we talk about the financial policies, we should talk about whether or not that target is probably way too low.
Too low.
Yes. So I don't really, I don't want to see us.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'll, we'll talk about that. So certainly, you know, if you have any other ideas, let me know. Those are just my recommendations. I feel like those are solid amounts.
My, my only reason for the spreadsheet is there was one article we discussed last night, the spreadsheet had a $6,000 figure, and I think it was him.
Right, that is, that's the survey for Morrison Drive, and the amount that I had received was $6,000. I heard her say $3,000 last night, too, so.
I just made a note, so.
Yeah, correct. So, and I'm writing the motions anyway for the FinCom.
I mean, up to $6,000, then?
Yeah, well, I'm going to make it three.
Okay.
Because that's coming from free cash, so.
Yeah, great.
Okay, so those are those two, and then I'll keep moving on. So we have another article I had put on there as a placeholder for the town hall campus. Originally, I had recommended about $100,000. That's still going to be needed, there's no question. Our paint bids will come in next week, the day after the STM. I think it's, it's pretty safe to assume, I think we approved $50,000 at a previous meeting. That's not going to be enough, even just for the painting, but we do have other funding sources for campus that we can tap into now, assuming that we are going to put some money towards this in May. That's.
So you, you said that there's no money going to this time?
I'm, I want to pass over it for now, and so we have, that's, again, that's, my recommendation is to pass over. You certainly can advocate for putting money in now rather than later. That's your choice.
This is the, this is the town hall campus, huh?
Correct, because originally, when I put the placeholder, I was hopeful that we have multiple cost estimates in for the well and for the painting and et cetera. And we, we will, but not in time for STM, and so we know it's out there. I don't think that whole, I don't think by skipping this time, it's not going to prevent us awarding anything. We still have money available to do the initial drilling that we need to do for the well. We still will have money available, hopefully, providing it's not $350,000 to paint the town hall. If it is, we're coming back anyway in May, so.
I don't want to get bogged down in this, but I know back when the FinCom talked about this, it would have been a year ago when we talked about this.
Yes.
Yes.
Been talking about the painting for a year and a half.
But the, the discussion was, we didn't want to just slap paint on it again, but we have to do something that's.
Correct.
Historically accurate.
Right, and, right, and we, the RFP is, looks, is requesting historical, yeah, certification for historical bidders. I mean, it's basically following the exact model that they just did for Milford. I mean, we have two people who did the walkthrough this week, are anticipating two bids. I think it's going to be more than we approved at town meeting, but hopefully not unreasonably so, so. But again, that's up to you. I just know, we had some support last week on FinCom for putting money in right now. Go ahead and do it. I was saying pass over. They said put money in now, put it aside if it's for that project. This is your call. It's just, we'll have to go to the floor without any specific numbers besides the paint, and I don't know what that number is. No, until the day after.
Well, we couldn't spend any money until we, until we actually get approved an RFP for something like.
Correct, I mean.
So just to give us the money to, to be able to do it once we do get, rather.
Right, it basically puts aside, would put aside money now based on an estimate of what we think the cost might be for, and at, at least the painting. And I know Dan did the walkthrough the other day, but I think they said that they thought that they could actually get that done this year, not this spring, now. So assuming we can move forward. I, I think we have, I think we'll have enough money between the accounts that we have anyway to cover it, but I'm open to it. But we're just on the floor, you know, it's going to be an issue because people that want to want to see.
If you set it up, would it be a special account, or wouldn't have to go back to?
Yeah, when you, so this came up the other night at FinCom, too. Anytime you approve any one of these things in this way with money, it gets put into its own line item special that does not roll over into free cash. It's like a special article that you do in May. So it, it came up last, it's FinCom, and that's exactly what this does. It's not adding money into a operating budget line. It's taking the money and putting it aside for this, whatever the wording of the motion allows it to be used for, right? So we used to, like, we did complete streets in town hall campus before, well, campus is, you know, that's, that's, so you could, you could, you could put something aside, but that's your call. I'm just saying.
I, I was more in favor of just waiting until you just told me that you can get it done this year, now I want to put money. Because if we can get it done this year, I don't, there's only people who drag and borrow and steal from somewhere else, and then what if they don't transfer it the next town meeting? And now, now we ran every other pocket this year.
So without going into too many specifics, I will say, when I called to get an estimate, when we did the original one, whatever that was, last year, six months ago, I was told between $50,000 and $100,000, okay? But we didn't have, it was just an estimate at the time. Milford's came in at almost $300,000.
Yeah, well, there's.
They're much bigger than, so I, we're.
It's more square.
So if we were, we, but we don't know what type of repair work they might have, we don't know those sorts of things. So I mean, if, I, I originally said $100,000 because I was thinking $150,000 should cover it. That's what I was thinking when I suggested it, but you know that typically.
I'd rather have 100, we have to pull it from some, pulls the pieces from somewhere else to make up the difference and then work on it back then, and try to see if it can be done that.
Yeah, well, that's your call.
Even if it was the repairs, even if we couldn't get the whole thing done, if there are repairs, basically, then.
Right, there would be money available for this specific, I mean, you could just say town hall campus again, like we're doing, and it could be used for any purpose, which is kind of why it gets people get nervous. Because they think we're gonna.
I would rather designate $100,000 for, you know, for the exterior of the town hall.
The problem is, the warrant says town hall campus.
Yeah, but is that always restrictive, though?
Yes, we can, we can, we can more restrictive.
Yes.
So you know, to me, there's so much that needs to be done on this property.
It's not going to go away.
The well, the paint, the library needs paint, or the formal library. It, it, there's so much, so even, I think restricting the $100,000 to just be the paintings, knowing, what if it comes in at 50, and we have $100,000 sitting that we can't utilize for some of these other projects that we are all involved in.
If you don't spend the money, it stays in there until you allocate it towards something else again in the future. So it's not as if it disappears. It's held in an account, so.
I see what you're saying, too, the, just keep it as campus.
Right.
Because we know we have a ton of work to do.
Because, so like, let's say we get an RFP in the, by some miracle, it gets in, it comes in, and we get something bid for the demo in April. We'd have the money then and we could go, but the problem is, we don't, people have been asking for a lot more detail than that, and it's impossible to continue explaining how it's can't know the detail until we go through the.
We can explain it, and then you. Talk about the fact that there's a grant, there's grant money involved now with this property, there's the need for the well replacement, there's a diary to have two or three building, one of the buildings needs to be demolished, two buildings need to be painted, maybe it's just.
One building's in the way of the police station being utilized to explore the venture.
Right. So I think there's a, I think we have to ability to go on the town meeting floor, list all of the things that this money is, could be used for.
Yeah, can I ask a question about other funding sources?
Sure.
Because there are grants available, I think, for some of the other needs on the town hall campus outside of, you put aside.
Well, we, we already have, we've discussed multiple potential funding sources that we actually have been already putting aside the last five years.
Okay, so you need some guidance, or just don't?
Well, and it's 167,000 in town hall campus, it's 115,000 from in Mill Hill Road, it's 100,000 coming back from the police station, it's whatever the MBE grant was ma, I mean, so it's.
Well, so you just please streets, is that the word?
Come please streets, yeah.
You still have, I mean, that.
Yes, we do. That's.
Wasn't even by the bricks.
I think we need to buy the permits.
From the, well, ID, is that it?
We have, we have, we have been working towards this project since the day I arrived here. So we have little pockets of money we put aside that can be used for specific purposes here. We need more money, that's the fact.
So you've got, you just quoted about 400K.
Right.
So you're saying that the suggestion is to put another 100K besides the 400K, and then that would give us a half a million to do anything we need to do with this.
Well, we still have, we have to repurpose some of the other monies, the station money, the in Mill Hill Road money has to be dedicated towards the source. But really, what it would do is provide the opportunity in the spring before May, if there's an opportunity to move on some of this, we could do it. The worst case scenario is it doesn't come together and the money sits there until May, we find out it's five times as much, and then we have to find more money in May.
But any of these, this 400K, we don't have access to that to use it right now.
We have, we have, we have access to some of it now.
How much?
160,000, 210.
So what, so to answer Lani's question, if somebody says, yes, we can, we can do the town hall exterior this year, you're telling me 160K can do this for that purpose?
You said 210.
210.
Okay, so we have 210 to use for that purpose, even if you don't move any other money.
Right, but that, it would take everything we put aside, you know what I mean? It's basically like, it's, it could be done. See, that problem.
Which is why you not, have not managed.
Right.
Well, because I, the fact is, there's a strong possibility we could need the money and it could. and it could come together in March or April, right? If the weather is right and the conditions are right and that building comes down and, and the well comes to, I think we could need more money, but could it wait till May? Sure could. But with that, I don't know how supportive the town is going to be without the specific numbers from RFPs coming back. We've met some resistance about that in the past.
If we have that much and we can still get this painted now, if we're, we're.
Without moving any of the money.
And we can be more specific to the folks, then let's do it, we'll pass over.
Yeah, I just think, you know, and that the, I mean, if the paint comes in two fifty, I mean, we got to have a conversation anyway.
We'll wait, we'll wait till May. All right.
Thank you.
We'll pass it over.
Oh, wait, so that's that one. And then the last one we have to talk about is the demolition delay by law. Because as you know, we received an email about a week or so ago from Cindy recommending that we should pass over it.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Uh, Chief Kersey, his hands up.
Oh.
Is that for?
His hands up, his hands up, yeah.
Yeah, that's for the hundred thousand, can you hear me?
Yep.
So the only, um, thing I would say about passing over that hundred thousand that you might want to think about is we do have about a hundred and twenty left to finish the police station, which would cover some finished, uh, paving and the demolition of that building and then some, some security stuff that we cut back on that we were going to add back in if we didn't have money. Um, the only thing I would worry about is once we bid and take down the building, um, they think we're good with mitigation, but once we get under that building, um, from what they didn't see, I, I'm always worried about that because that building was built in the forties and things weren't done the way they're done now. So I don't, hopefully we don't find anything, but if we find a surprise there, I just don't know what the plan would be to cover that.
I would feel better if we just do.
Try it. Okay.
I get both sides, but it's like, it's here. Why not try it and if they want more specifics, then okay, we'll come back.
He's, I thought, I thought you were just talking about the building there.
Oh.
Wow. Oh, I know. Uh, oh, no, I, I, I.
It could be expensive.
I'm fine with either, I just wanted to be transparent about what I think potentially are the issues going into town meeting.
My concern is that, so then if we're going to do this, right, let's be very specific on what money we have available, where those pockets are, where we'll have to move from what's available to use, just so that, because those questions have come up and it, kind of within this session that we just went now, people are just going to get angry. And we should have a whole presentation.
Well, it's, it's, it's a lot simpler than all of those things because we'll still have to go to town meeting to move a couple of those. What we have available right now is about two ten.
Yeah.
That's the bottom line.
Okay. And we have these other grants that we have a lot.
We have other pockets of money because we have to reallocate at a future meeting that we can use towards it, yes.
To finish the whole.
But it's not more than another two hundred thousand dollars. So and you know that this is going to cost more than five hundred thousand dollars.
So we're not, not passing over it.
So how much do you want to go put on here?
Well, if, if you're telling me we got two ten.
Yep.
And the specific purpose is to do the, right, not do the painting.
Potentially pay for the testing, the well testing to make sure the site is right, which I'm guessing is six to ten thousand dollars, I'm guessing. Uh, and then potentially the demo, we have no idea what that's going to cost or what remediation of that site would cost.
Chief, did you get any number for that?
We know, we're, we're out to bid with it. I think Cindy's working on the actual bid paperwork right now so we can get that out. Um, Kim, are you including in that two ten the, the one twenty or so we have left from the police station?
No, I'm not. I'm actually only including funds that we don't have to move. So the complete streets money, the campus money, and then the fifty thousand we approved at the last town meeting. So that's the two, cash on hand, basically.
I think we have about a hundred to a hundred twenty left to finish the police station portion of it, which would, again, would be the demolition. We're hoping that would be twenty to fifty thousand. Then the paving, we would put aside and wait to do it with the complete streets and the grants that we have. So we, we would utilize that properly and then we have some security that we cut back on that we're waiting to add back in until we know we get enough money.
That one twenty doesn't have to be redirected, that's you might.
Yeah, he can use it as, so it's with his project though, specific to them. So that's not facing this or doing the well.
All those demolition, all this part of it.
Yeah, you can get that where we go, right.
Yeah.
So that's three thirty. And if you're thinking, you're thinking we need a half a million to do everything?
No, wait, I think we're going to need more than that. It's impossible to know. I mean, but the, the well is a big piece of this, you know? Where it ends up is a big piece.
So just remember too, what we need to be left after you demo that building.
Yeah.
Is the, the well, if we're going to just include the, the, the tap building for paint, paving and landscaping, which paving and landscaping alone will get a little.
Yes, not to mention what's in the ground.
Under that.
So may, maybe we need to be, if you're actually considering doing this, I mean, if, if you're, if you're actually considering putting this on the STM, I mean, we have three hundred thousand dollars available in cash. And maybe the question is, how much will you put aside for this specific project right now? And then if we don't need it, right, it can be moved towards a future项目project.
So if you take half that three hundred, one fifty, for this purpose, and again, it's up, you know, you move the one fifty, but none of it can be expended until we have a specific.
Correct, we, right, we, we can't just spend it anyway, right? Everything we spend is going to be a big project on here and it's going to take.
But we have to.
And it's going to follow.
Available before we can do anything, so that's why I'm saying.
Correct, but it might happen before May, but it might not at all and then it's, you know.
Hundred thousand.
Okay. Hundred?
We do it?
Oh. Okay, back to my original suggestion, but you know what? Whatever. Okay, demolition bylaw, Cindy.
Are we gonna, are we moving on, are we gonna make a motion about?
No, because I, I think the motion is going to be as discussed. And then we'll fill in the numbers and then what we passed over on these, because we got to talk about Kinsley Lane too, right?
It's a passover, that's just a passover.
Right, but that's, so if we end up passing over demo, we're going to pass over Kinsley Lane and then we're gonna, it's.
We'll round that.
Two fifty, one hundred, twenty five, and a hundred for the other one, so.
Okay, Cindy. You're on, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now? I have an awful lot of questions about what this bylaw is meant to do and what it actually may do. And as you can see from my marking up, I think there's a lot of unanswered questions in it. Um, my biggest concern is when you try to add up the potential timeframe that going through this process could take, it's incredibly long. And I don't know if that was intentional and I don't know if it's really justified. Um, I just think, I've never had a conversation with any of the proponents of this. Uh, I've talked to Lonnie about it, uh, given everyone my comments. I think there are too many unanswered questions about the details of how this will work and its ultimate impacts on anyone who has a property that they may want to demolish that goes potentially beyond what would be a reasonable perfection of any sort of historic valid, value. So I just think that there's too many unanswered questions to act on it at this time.
Next question, I just want to understand, there is already, this demolition bylaw, are there, correct?
Yes.
So the, the idea is to modify it more practical?
So there was some cleanup, there was, it was, um, there was some floor restrictions put in, but during the process, I worked along with the historical committee to look at timelines and whatnot. Um, and everybody kind of came to an agreement on timelines. Uh, I met with Cindy prior to meeting with them, met with, um, building inspector prime, uh, building commissioner prime, that just looking at the different aspects of it. Uh, we got that page and then I did, uh, had concerns.
Yep.
That were voiced, but I didn't speak to them because I didn't want to speak to Cindy. Um, and then this is where we're at now, I guess.
So the, so when you said you want to clean it up, there's a lot to, to basically shorten the timeframe so that you can actually get things done?
No, no, so there was, the cleanup was just more language, um, and people probably helped, helped.
Like, there were things that were, so there's, yeah, there were things that were confusing, like what happens if you probably dissolve the process? If we give our approval, how long, how, just like that? Um, you know, referencing the new online permit system.
Yeah, there was definitely just a, a lot of, even word spending cleaning up, there were, there was some word we found, uh, that's right, that the committee found. At, at the end of the day, the, the big thing was, uh, you know, uh, uh, making it from a six month delay to a twelve month delay. And it was in, it ended up in a nine month delay. Once, if the, if the town deemed it, sorry, if the historical committee deemed it historically significant and went through the next phase of the process. Uh, there was some timelines extended, um, again, it's, it's concerned, we had kind of had some staying consultants, but once we kind of talked through them, made some adjustments, there were some adjustments made that it kind of made sense depending on about how often the committee meets and things along those lines as far as how long. There was some extensions given or, or put into it for, because they meet only once a month and they could only have, if an application came in a certain amount of time, they may only have a week to meet it, to talk about it, because the next meeting.
Yeah, because, but the, the first thing is, there's no way this is going to get resolved between town meeting.
I'm not, I, I guess not unless Cindy's comments were just incorporated, but I think if she wants to talk more about it, then, then I, I think that she should work with either, we should have a joint meeting with the historical, us to go, to go through it.
Right.
Right, I, I didn't make a point.
No, that would be my suggestion.
I'm concerned about these sections that say some of this might not be lawful. When I put forward a bylaw, that's not.
Well, the, the problem with that was, and Cindy can probably speak to it a little bit more, the other, one of the major unlawful parts is already in the file.
Well, well, that's.
I, I, I looked at it and I saw, I mean, you're right, I, I have some concerns and I have some concerns about the way the existing bylaw is even without these changes. But when I started to look through all these changes, in a nutshell, I do think I need to talk to them and they, they need to talk to me about what they really want to accomplish. Um, but when I look at things at business days, it's now Monday through Friday. And that, you know, it, it, that's extending things already, um, which is narrower than it was. They've gone in some places from twenty days to forty days. That's an incredible increase on things. They've added, I, things that were like ten days, now ten businesses. I just wanted to make sure that at the end of the day, if you're going to go through a rewrite of a bylaw, you do what you want it to do and that you don't go too far or that you don't then have questions that should have been answered before get passed. And quite frankly, given that we're going into the winter, I don't think it's a huge, um, impact to the town to work on it and have it come before the town meeting in the spring. That's just my opinion. I just, I had more questions than I wasn't comfortable with what I was seeing.
Dan?
Yeah, so I just, I'll agree with everyone, you know, our goal is to put forward a lot of, um, I'm trying to say, so we want to do it right, there's problems we want to fix it. I guess I'm just incredibly frustrated with the process. These notes apparently came in several weeks ago. We sent our draft in October, we've been working on this for over two years. We've been begging for council to take a look and give our feedback. You know, and we want the feedback, absolutely, like she said, I would, you know, we want to make sure it does what we think it does. So what can we do to close this out and deal with the things now? We've already, we had this whole discussion about, let's sit down, look at work on it last winter. And now here we are, yet again, let's hold off and, you know, I just, it's, it's insane.
Well, hang, hang on. We talked about talking about this last winter and then we didn't start talking about it until September. I was waiting for you guys and, and, and asked, let's not just start pointing fingers around. Everybody's in, in the same boat here with Hyatt, okay? So the fact that if the, that this, if, if it's not ready, and, and in the meeting, I specifically said, council has issues with this, 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 and this, and now it's more. But those are the three key things and I said, get with council.
So I guess our question is, how are we, we have sent this draft in, sent it in, are we maintained? What is the process to, you know, ideally?
To ask, to ask to meet with council?
If she can attend one of our meetings, that would be.
Right, or we haven't heard anything about it, just ask to meet with council about it. I, 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 that's what I, I was saying, we get with council, I don't.
Just to clarify, these notes came in on the twenty eighth of October, so ten days after yours, submitted the Monday eighteenth? I don't think that's unreasonable.
It hasn't been, it hasn't been weeks or months, and I think we all have to remember, you're in the middle of a pandemic, which everybody's frustrated about everything being slowed down from last winter. It's all, it's been an issue, but now you can see with, with hybrid how easy it is to get council here. So let's just, let's move forward and now we find out the bylaw that exists is flawed anyways. And the last thing I would want to do is try to pass something that's still flawed and have it still flawed again. So can we just pick a date now?
Yeah, I, I, again, at least my perspective, I, we don't, you know, we want to do it right. I feel like we have sent it in specifically asking for council's feedback and received nothing in response, I believe.
Who, 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 it's, it's.
I am. We have to. We sent in an old draft, no response. I think then followed, asked, no response. And, you know, so I think somehow the process is broken.
Well, well, again, you know, we've just been through a pandemic. I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable to understand that anything got mixed up. But the point is, there was something sent in and it was back in ten days and that was less than ten days ago. So, or maybe fifty days now, but let's just pick a date and move forward.
Um, could I add some things to the conversation here, Kathy Schofield? Um, I, I support exactly what Dan is saying because I too have sat there through this, what's kind of turned out to be a circus. Regardless of whether or not there was a, a, a COVID, you know, outbreak, we asked back in April to speak with town council, um, and that was going through Kim Newman. So we have been kind of pushed to the side all of this time to try to get this accomplished. We've worked with Lonnie, we took his suggestions, we made the edits that he asked us to do. And when we spoke to him at the last meeting, he said we were good to go. So we are confused, we are trying to get something accomplished. Um, Cindy, I don't know if you're familiar, but a hundred and sixty towns in Massachusetts have a demolition delay by law that looks almost exactly like ours. So, um, I would, you know, think that it's important, um, they also have, yeah, but deadlines that are twelve months. I don't think that we're asking much of the taxpayers and I also believe that the taxpayers should make that decision if they want six or nine months. And it shouldn't be debated and, and, you know.
Well, hang, hang on a second. If, 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 if the, the taxpayers already had their say whether it was six or nine months, so let's probably not go too far down there. We, we have a bylaw that has six and, and we've worked together to, to debate it, to make it nine. I'm not sure how you're saying not to debate that, or discuss that. And if the taxpayers have already spoken, then they've already spoken, right?
That, that was fifteen years ago, Lonnie. And bylaws do change over time and circumstances change in each community. So this is why a lot of communities go back and look at, you know, whether or not their bylaw is effective and if changes need to be made, and that's where we were left.
Okay, well, at this point, at this point, council has, has got say in it, let's just put it on the next agenda. We can have a joint meeting about it and, and we'll, uh, we'll go with that.
We would like to have that information, um.
Yep.
From Cindy, please, again.
Kathy, I was just saying, if we could get a copy of her notes, that would be great because I'm fully agree with it. And, you know, we're meeting, the store is meeting on, on Monday so we can talk about things, trying to answer questions. So, you know, yeah, you want to do this to well, you just.
If, if, if the store is going to meet on Monday, can council meet, Kathy, Cindy, can you meet with them on Monday?
Monday is going to be really tough for me this week. Um, I can see if I can move something around, but I'm not sure I can do Monday. Can I let you know it by the end of the day tomorrow? Monday is looking really tough for me, what time do you meet?
Um, you know what, Cindy, if you're, if we're taking this off the warrant. Um, you know what, Cindy, if you're, if you're taking this off the warrant, then I don't see the need to rush it on this on Monday's meeting, but maybe we can plan a December meeting.
A December meeting would be great for me.
Okay.
I'm, you know, the month of December is busy, but it's not like the month of November at the moment. Um, and then we will have plenty of time. I'm assuming you all have my comments.
No, we do not, and they haven't been shared with us except through Lonnie. But we've never seen written comments or anything. So if you can get those to us, we can work on those on Monday and start, you know, reviewing them.
Okay.
Yeah, the only comments that they would have had were the, were the handwritten notes that Cindy, that I had taken when you and I first spoke. But all I, I didn't even go into detail with them. I only said that you had concerns about certain sections and my assumption was that they would be discussed, but I apologize.
Laura, do you have the recent, the copy of all my comments?
Yep, I'm sending it right now. So now that the board has officially discussed it at an open meeting, I will happily send the documentation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And you can always, you know, you can always reach out to me with questions you have by email or a phone call. And I'm, and I do believe it is important, once you've looked at everything, that we sit down in a meeting and discuss it all together. But that doesn't mean if you have immediate comments or questions, you can't reach out to me.
Yep, we will do that.
So as we are talking, hopefully, you know, it's all, what is the process? Do we?
No, yes, I, I, I would, I would agree with Cindy that, that.
Just to know.
We have a mandate keep on anybody talking to council.
If you want us to channel the person, should we just email Cindy?
But just to pick those, I think it's okay.
Okay.
But, but, but do me a favor. And, and, and maybe we can do this while we get through this to make sure that this gets done right. If we're going to talk with this, just CC, BOS and CC historical, if we're going to send anything back and forth, is that fair for everybody? That way we're all at least up to speed when we get to a meeting.
Good. All right. Kathy's hand is up above that speed.
Kathy, is that from before? Do you still have?
Yeah, that's from before. Sorry. Thank you.
You don't know?
I think so. Must, well, we gotta talk about, so might as well.
No, just pass over.
Well, okay.
And there's a reason, the reason we're passing over Chris is just physically, there's too many laws in place to try to even think so. I'll try to, I'll survey the personnel post to live there to see if there's, there's other, um, process, uh, process. I know that Cindy had sent over, there's ways that would involve here.
Yeah.
Kind of making a show of it, yes, then presented, there's really no way for us to survey the road and then.
They all paved that road, at least Kinzie at one time, right?
A portion there, a lot of the ball.
That was one.
Yeah, 10 years.
All. Or what?
Everybody takes.
Uh, okay, so there is a motion on, except on. We're wrapping that up. This is, uh. The article to pass present.
Second.
On the table.
Aye.
Trying to think about a few things. We have books waiting for everything, but we have a group for negotiation discussion and we want, yeah, and we want to get through them.
I think we could wrap it up in 10 minutes if we just talk really fast.
The media?
No, with that, we'll have to stop here. Yes, Morrison Drive, sorry, I could take over, but we'll come back to Jack in one minute. But Morrison Drive isn't a, we were going to talk about anyway, so technically that's STM on the warrant we talked about. It's 3,000 instead of six.
And that's what.
Done. Um, financial policies is an ongoing process that's been happening. I provided three documents. Eric is on, Tony and Jody is also here. We have the draft, um, documents from a couple of years ago that we were working on. We have the long range financial plan in your packet now that we, was approved and updated in 2018. And we have a contact person for DLS and Eric is in contact with them because they know each other. So that's happening.
My, my only interjection to all of that, I spoke with him, he said, you come and do a 10 minute presentation.
Um, right.
On Zoom, on Teams, he just needs us to make a motion to ask him to.
Correct. And so that's up to you guys.
And I think it'd be a good idea to listen to what he has to say. Who's it?
We have the DLS comment to the presentation about what their review would do. I mean, Eric might be able to tell you a synopsis. He's been a part of it before.
Name is, name is that. The vote that you're asking for the actual request of DLS due to do.
So we can see if you can come on them first. Eric, do you have any additional? Back, I don't know, probably seen these presentations before.
Um, ye- yes, um, uh, they're, they're right. If the selectmen need to take a vote, because that way Zach will know you guys are serious and he'll come out and, um, do the initial presentation. And as far, this dovetails nicely with the policies because, uh, we worked with Zach in another town and, um, they took the policies, the selectmen voted like one or two policies each meeting. So, um, so as far as like procedural selectment tonight, if they vote, if they agree that they'd like the DLS to come in and do like a financial review, um, they'll, they'll do that. And, um, this will, he'll, he'll like, um, our policies that we drafted because we, what we did was we plagiarized them from best practices from DLS and other crowds. And then we, then we modified them for Mendon after talking with Gene and Jen at the time. So, yeah. So that's it. So Mike's right. They just have to, um, the selectmen take a vote just to get that process kicked off and then at that time he'll come in.
The only thing I would point out, I thought it would be good to have a vote to have them do it, just to invite them to do this 10 minute presentation. And they do it, I, I mean, if you want to go ahead and vote it now, I'm okay with that too. But at least we'd ask them to come do a 10 minute.
Now they're saying we have to vote it.
No, they're saying, well, they're saying no, they'll do the presentation if we just invite.
Oh, okay.
Have to take a vote to have them do it. I mean, unless you want to say, yes, go ahead and go through it.
I have a couple.
But I would rather see the presentation first, so we understand what they're going to do.
I, I think it does, if vote it so it's possible, right? You probably have to schedule it out anyway. Everyone is super busy right now. Right. And so in, we're in no immediate risk of anything because we have documents that were updated as recently as 2018, which were good enough to uphold our bond rating close with Moody's. So it's not as if we're not, because people keep hearing us talk about financial policies and situations where we have practices in place and we have a set of documents good enough for Moody's. Where, okay, what we're doing is modernizing it, updating, you know, putting our practices into written form.
Right.
Matching the DLS. And so take the vote or wait.
Can you reach out to Zach and just say?
Yes.
They want you to come in.
Yes.
And then we can take a vote that night.
Perfect.
For half of that.
Yeah, good. Okay.
But I think it'd be nice to have a bit of background and understanding of exactly what the Scottish Services is before we make a vote and, you know.
Okay.
Really the project approval. Yeah.
Perfect. Next. Sorry.
So we get to, I do a meeting. Right. Go live there and work.
Okay, so we've started talking now to start going in. It's, it's conversational at this point, but obviously I think most people have heard the board express now over the last few months that we would like to have all meetings be hybrid. Um, that's every board and commission that the town has in any shape, size and form.
Recorded.
Recorded and we want to have, uh, whoever is the paid staff, employee of the person and trained, the admin who's on there, the secretary, the clerk, whoever it is, that is the person who, right, who is an employee of the town is the one handling the equipment on behalf of the town. They're paid to be there anyway theoretically, right? So we're going to get them trained. I would, we're going to draft some, we're talking about some specifics around what it would be. Um, talking about potentially having boards and committees send first of the year their preferred couple of meeting dates every month and locking in a calendar until we get a second site set up, which hopefully is the new police station training room. That's what it was designed for. Um, also to, you know, basically encourage anyone who might be afraid. We have laptops that we got through the CARES Act for every board and commission so that we would be prepared for this, that we have set up to go with Microsoft. I mean, we are ready to go on this and I don't know about the rest of you, but I mean, I'm able to go to multiple meetings now a night, which I don't know if it's a blessing or a curse. But honestly, I, it's better, this is better.
You need to go in from one to the other.
Correct. And a lot of people, I mean, a lot of people have been waiting tonight and listening in, but I mean, there's, it, there's a benefit to people being able to come to our meetings. We're trying to be as transparent as possible. We're trying to reach as many people as possible. This is the next step of that. So, um, I want to draft a little something. I, I wanted to come from the board and to go out to all boards and commissions and basically say January 1st is our expected date. Send us your preferred meeting dates. Town clerk will handle the calendar for the room like we normally do. We'll assist up here, but work on getting that room done.
What we're going to do is put a policy in.
Some outlines and I know Dan is working on a set of bullet point guidelines, basically to teach people how to use the, and so, I mean, I'm confident between the IT people we have in the room and the staff that we have on hand, that this should be an easy accomplishment for everyone.
You know, I think, did you guys?
Just know there's a little wiring like you said to clean up, but I think if we, if we get this over by the window, we can.
I mean, yeah, honestly, I come up both sides of power and you can, you know, side, because that side might be better.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we can be.
Dan, you can answer that we're going to have cable eight is going to use more cameras and.
So the cable, yeah, they're going to redo this and I think what we're finding, when you have a big meeting, I think sometimes it's better to turn on the whole system, get the PA. You know, when you have a real small group in here, it'll harder to hear on that system. This is really my road. But if you build that one door, that would make a big difference, you know, for a smaller door, a smaller door.
Right.
Um, so, you know, I mean.
Well, the reality is, I mean, the result of having higher views is increased public participation where the public can sit and, and ask questions, listen. And so I think it's important that that is applied, these sort of meetings are applied to all of us because they are public meetings and they have had a term of public participation.
Right.
And so if we want them to be more involved here, we need to make it easier for people to be involved. So what's great about that, it's, it's being accessible, right from the ground floor.
This one too?
Yeah. Yeah, but it's more.
We, right, part of the benefit of that design of that building was this purpose, basically. And it's, if anything, COVID is accelerating for us to be ready. And so we're ready. There's no more excuses really. I mean, boards that are meeting in small rooms or in other buildings, you need to be invited to come here or there. I mean, there are some exceptions. We talked about it a little bit today about like the council aging or the library board of trustees, like we're going to figure out something for them, like maybe.
We can make an accommodation. I think now I want to talk to them about that apply when they run us. We can, we can probably get a, a smaller setup down. And then exactly be used as a meeting room because this, these inside rooms.
Yes, I.
Especially that one up top. Yeah, it's, again, the cost of these would not. You've already got a TV, what's the cost of the TV?
To see if we can negotiate harm in the right team person and get a.
Yeah, oh, I was talking to Clark. What a very.
Well, I don't know, but I don't think they're gonna find they want one.
Oh, yeah, I, 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 I put it in the, I asked for it, a quote for them.
Okay.
All right, so.
Excellent.
Next meeting, you can have some, something on paper.
The bullet points is where you just start. I'll start sketching that out. I, I want to send the email out because we want to give them at least a month. So for December 1st, like for to start, if we're going to start in February, then people need to be trained basically in December. I mean, it's.
We're also building a 365 pieces so that each board will have place to store the documents that or I see that when you do log into the system, now be able to present a lot easier. Um, for instance, this, us, maybe we'll, we'll be the first ones to try it. Um, we'll be, but I haven't started it for the FinCom. We actually had discussions today at the office about it. This can go away so we can just open up the whole group and be able to.
I, two questions. One, some boards have a full remote. Someone said it sounds like that will be open until April. So just something to think about. I have some boards that found a full remote working great for them, the board health. And then the other question is, there's going to be a provision and I think like this comes up with parks, so we need on the site. You know, we had a meeting in the middle of baseball field. Is there an expectation of, is there some?
I think the expectation should be that to the extent we can, every board and commission, every board have a scheduled time and place that they can meet. Maybe it's not every meeting, but if we start creating exceptions.
Yeah.
But.
I mean, I can see if parks have one item, they're just going to go meet at the field, look at something, not something.
Right, having a regular agenda where people could tune in if they want to or, and then people say, I don't know, it's all available. So.
And if you have, and if you have a laptop, that might as well send your phone.
Right.
Yeah, but, but, yeah, but you might get.
Dan asked people, I mean, this is a town phone.
Full remote is also fine as long as it's recorded and people can participate, as long as there is a link through our system. That's another one.
If you do it.
Then we're good.
That's what I mean.
Yes.
Okay, we'll work on that. Yeah, is the answer.
So Cindy, so. What is the purpose?
Wrong.
Cindy has a question.
No, I'm just saying, I'm sitting here listening or trying really hard to listen to all of this. And as someone sitting here, I can tell you, when you were all on Zoom, it was very easy to understand you all. But as I'm sitting here today, maybe it's because you all have your backs to the.
Uh, to the.
It's not, there's an incredible echo, but people who are calling in and are remote are perfectly clear. So I don't know if that's just a function of the way the room is set up, but you might want to try to work on that before you start to get all the other boards involved because it is difficult to understand all of you when you are live and the rest of us are Zoom. That's all.
There are any mics on?
Yeah, so the top now Steve makes the.
Yeah, how's that Cindy? Better?
You still turn your back. Cindy, is that any better than I'm?
It's still very echoey, but it's, you know, I'm just saying, as someone who's here trying to really hard to be better. But I mean, it is, it is something you should be aware of. Please face the cameras so people can kind of see what you're saying.
Okay.
All right. Hold on, just, I, I believe that there are microphones from what they set up that might help that, help that situation. And I don't know if we can have, it might be a second mic.
Well, this road is challenging. Do you think maybe there's like the ability to have some of those?
I, I, let me, let me. I'll check, I'll check.
All right, great. Well, thanks for the feedback, Cindy.
Or.
Figure I'm somewhat technologically challenged. I'm a good benchmark.
You guys have appointed someone to FinCom that works for one of the most premier audio companies in the world, so I bet you someone could help with that.
What, that silly golden company?
What's been based on the FinCom meeting last night when I was participating and I was remote like Cindy, I wouldn't, couldn't hear you guys clearly when you were talking, but I could hear those guys just fine. So maybe you gotta get that together again. Yes.
All right.
Okay.
These are good.
All right, yard sale permit?
Yard sale permits, you know, uh, brought to me by, um, and asked purpose of them was, I don't own permits, some of them are, you know, and everything else.
We can get rid of.
It's really not a major revenue source to town. And then so.
My only question is whether or not there's a public safety issue, meaning notification of an event. So as long as both chiefs said, no problem, I'm good with it.
As I recall.
I'll even take one out of two if only one is on the thing. But it's up to me.
Hang on, so Chief, do you get notified when we get an application for a yard sale permit?
I'm in on there. Oh.
Um, we haven't had yard sales in a while. Um, I don't think we do.
My, my memory was, the reason this was started was, you know, people that would come early and there was, there was traffic issues because yard sales are very popular and people were showing up early and there'd be traffic jams everywhere. And the idea was to control it or at least know where it was gonna be.
How about, I think if there's a town wide yard sale, that might be.
Well, that's just one, that's run by the C D C. We have the permit. That's different every day. Are we really waiting?
No fees, just notify us, please. How about that?
No, my.
If you guys want to set something up, I can have, Lonnie, I can have Nick do something on a website where they have to register on the website and it, they don't charge, you know? We do something like that, Nick's pretty good at doing all that type of stuff.
I really just think.
Okay, why don't we just take it off our website and say if you're having a, or we have a yard sale. Or you make it disappear and see if anyone notices.
I don't think it's an issue that we get used to it, because you know what? The difference was people would put it off, now they're putting it on Facebook.
Right.
So they're not, they're not going on the front line anymore.
And I think people are asking them and don't even know that they need a permit. I really think.
Yard sales in town.
We have enough, my, my person, we have enough documentation and I think we just.
Let's put it this way, like, for instance, every time we have one, I always forget to get one. I had to come like rushing down Monday after that.
Yeah, please, I'm sorry. So, so is there a motion to designate the.
Yeah. I will do one after permitting and I second it twice.
Okay.
I am.
Okay, I'm waiting.
I'll have to wait later, we get rid of.
FY23 budget.
Okay, a lot of conversations the past week or two about the budget process, both at the FinCom and here at the board level about how this year is gonna look. So I just wanna start by saying, we've used the same process for the last seven years that I have been here. Okay? That is the same process that we used for the, that we used the two years before, right? But before that, it was a different process until the board decided to change the order in which the process occurred. What happens now is the departments submit their budgets in December by the end of the year. I will do a budget review with them, I will bring a budget to the board. The board will determine what their priorities are for the fiscal year. We will then balance that budget to the best of our ability and then we bring that to FinCom to weigh in on the expenditures. We've been doing that successfully for seven, some odd years, I'd say. That's it. Um, this year, because there's a lot of questions regarding the school budget and what happened with our budget last year, I think there is a desire on both boards to have a little bit more transparency about the process, um, which is great because it's the same. It's the same process. But I will say, um, in reviewing the documents that Jordy just actually sent out last night to the FinCom, the very first one is the budget guidelines from the D L S. And we actually do every single one of the things on that list except for one. And the one that we don't do is meet with the FinCom initially, the school board initially, and the, this board to talk about revenue projections for the year and basically priorities. And I think maybe that's a good place to start this year.
Can I, I'm arguing that you and I, as the chair of FinCom, would meet and talk about.
Oh, we, we always, yes.
But we talk in front of our.
We don't get our revenues really until December. And at that point, you know, in the past, years ago, Mark and I were talking about it earlier. I mean, the board didn't actually receive the budget until the end of February, which is absolutely.
Because at that time, we had no town administrator. The finance committee took on the role of budget, basically the budget committee. And they created the budget from, from the beginning. And once we had hired Kim, we recognized that that's not how it should be done. It's the select board's budget that was created and then the finance committee vets those figures, right? And those expenditures. So we're in a position where we're doing it the correct way. It makes no sense to have the finance committee create our budget and tell us what our budget is.
Right.
It's not how it works.
But I do think, um, and I'm, it's the last couple of years, and Mike and I can tell you, because we've worked very closely together for the last, um, with the departments, we did kind of make a slight change. Because we've been doing level service budget for the last couple of years, really, we only broadened the departments or the, or we tried to invite all the boards and commissions or anybody elected, but only the departments that had a significant change or a request that we funded, those are the ones that came to the FinCom. Not every board and commission and not every department.
It's level service.
Right, and I'm, I'm guessing, though it's early, that we are, we are going to be, um, talking about doing level service again. And I think the scenario will be the same, but in an effort to save time, because the FinCom wants to see that all the departments they're saying, and the board would like to see departments, I think we should invite them to our meetings and possibly schedule, start scheduling a couple of departments, you know, end of the year, their numbers are in, and we're gonna meet twice in January. And we'll have some departments come in and we'll just keep, we'll have them come in here. So, I mean, honestly, the budget meetings that I have usually don't even last more than 15 to 20 minutes. Our budget is, our operating budget is $8 million, it's not that complicated. So, I mean, the changes that we have are usually ones that I'm managing or they're in public safety. So I, I think, you know, but it might be a good refresh to the public to know what's even in these budgets, right?
Yes.
So if you're on board with that, I would suggest we, you host a joint meeting, invite the school and the FinCom, probably early January.
Eric suggests something because that, that item that you last mentioned, finance committee meeting, the select board and the school committee is likely not with your region system, right?
Correct, but so.
Based on the multi-board meetings that we're gonna be having at that similar time, probably already.
In overlap. And I will also say, as you know, I am also going to be meeting with the uptown town manager and the interim superintendent in December as well. So, I mean, those meetings happen anyway, even if they're not held in this setting, but I.
I mean, I'm happy to do like a FinCom select board discussion of our priorities. I think that's.
I, I.
I don't think the, the school, I don't think, so it needs to be part of that. I mean, it wouldn't be good.
Because it doesn't.
Honestly?
Especially in the.
I disagree.
Well, maybe we invite.
Yes, and I only say that because based upon the conversation in the last multi-board meeting, when they were talking conceptually about the money that the town brings in, I don't think they understand that it's $350,000, you know, a year plus whatever. I mean, they, they don't know the, the size of the numbers, that, because the school budget is so big and their revenue, their numbers are so big. I mean, it's safe, you would assume that the town's numbers are that big, but they're just not. And so I think if we at least explain to them, show them what we're talking about.
That's fine.
I would like that opportunity, even if it's at multi-board, which I.
Right, and I think, thank you.
So does anybody, so typically I send that memo on December to the boards to start putting their budgets in. I mean, you want me to do it sooner or we won't have?
No. No.
Okay, I just need to, Eric, are you still on the line?
Yeah.
I need Eric to set up the new next year FY23 at K B S and then we're good to go. I also should say that we have a finance director, thank God. And she will be, um, taking the lead on the budget moving forward. But this year, obviously, we're gonna be doing it together because she's got enough on her plate and other two job titles she also has. So just to transition, but anything financial going forward, she'll be handling very confidently. Yes, Eric, hello.
Yeah, no, I, I got you, Kim, I just wanna, yeah, I can set, we can set that up like we do every year, that's fine.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, that's it on process.
There is a brush. I don't think there's anything new, new on this, I'm gonna, I would go to one of their meetings.
Perfect.
I already got some volunteers, so, well, they are not volunteers.
Volunteers.
Volunteers, yes. Consider I'm away with London Highway, R and M, Route 272.
Move to approve Manhattan, Robin, 32 M Y, that will be in effect on July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, discuss the name restricted over the district file. We doing Morrison?
We're skipping Morrison, well, not skipping, we're just funding the survey, basically.
The survey. It's too loud.
Yeah.
Um, I actually scheduled this because in my effort to get the word out, I was hoping people would be here to answer questions. I'm preaching to the choir a little bit, let's do someone here.
There's nobody here that wasn't on the meeting last, oh, no, wait.
Oh, well, people might want to.
Well, last night was recorded too.
And so was the planning board.
Yeah.
I'll do it anyway, as you know, I'm here, all right? Thanks for being here.
You have five minutes, Jeff, no pressure.
As you know, um, you guys contracted me before I worked here to write a bylaw to, uh, for an over 55 mixed-use development at, um, North Avenue and Milford. I think we wrote a very good, uh, bylaw with the help of town council and the planning board and many others. And, uh, unfortunately, it failed at town meeting, but because the planning board approved, uh, recommended approval back in the spring, we are allowed to come back. You guys, as a board, uh, pass speed to, to the number one, try again. So I've been hitting the road again. E D C has approved it, the land use committee has approved it, the planning board has approved it. Um, and, uh, I've been trying to reach out to as many people as I can, which I admit is not as many as I'd like, and to get recorded, since it's my third night. Um, the mixed-use development has a lot of controls in it and essentially it allows an over 55 residential development to occur there with a small commercial component. And that commercial component has to service both the public and the over 55. So you can, you know, there's a lot of things that could be. Um, and, uh, it's, it's restricted. It's restricted because we don't have water and soil. And we're guestimating maybe 100 bedrooms, maybe 110. There's some new designs, reception systems, things like that, which probably will be about 40, 50, maybe 60 units in total, according to what the sizes are, with maybe 10,000 square feet of, of that commercial component. Uh, if it was fortunate, if we're fortunate enough to have it pass, then we would go out to bid, uh, in your direction, um, to see what interest there is. I did a R F I, request for information in the winter of last year, and we had some interest. Uh, there was one in particular, there was one on the fence, and then one in particular followed up with me, but it didn't pass. Uh, so we, we'd get that word out and if, uh, the bids, when the bids come in, it would be your pleasure to choose if hopefully it's the best bid, both by design, quantity, quality, and price. And then if you meet, if you, uh, accept one that you like, then it goes to town meeting for them to hopefully accept that bid. And then it goes to the planning board for a whole litany of permits and discretion, uh, permits and, and design review, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a long process, a lot of checks and balances. I think, you know, the obvious goal was to have a really quality development there that services the needs of the town, um, gets you immediate revenue from a sale and has long-lasting, uh, tax revenue.
Right.
And I think we've met that goal so far.
Well, I would, I don't think we said this adequately at any previous town meeting, but since I've seen this fail now in multiple versions, at maybe three meetings since I've been here, right? Since 2014. We have a parcel of land that the town owns. The town has indicated to us many times that they want a very particular type of development, if at all, in that parcel. We are creating this overlay to control the type of development that the town, all these groups have agreed that they want there. Last meeting, when it fails, in the very next breath, the next article, people were complaining that we don't have enough revenue. This is how we make revenue in the town, by expanding the tax base, okay? These are the projects that need to go forward. If they don't go forward, then you cannot complain about taxes. This is.
Right, this, this is a critical step towards bringing revenue to London that is basically, I mean, we have control of this large piece of commercial property and it's sitting there doing nothing for our taxes.
Which we're making payments.
Every year when we talk about the school budget and need for more revenues, this is, this is it, this is where we have control. So we need voters to recognize that we're gonna have, continue to talk about overrides until we take action in developing our commercial land, and here we are again.
Do you want to go pitch, approach the table or?
Next.
Uh, Cole Lindy, 27, Robin Street, uh, this was very interesting to me. I sat in a meeting with the Economic Development Committee a few months ago, and this topic came up, we got this piece of property. And I learned a lot, uh, we do need to learn a lot more about what we just discussed recently, with respect to, uh, what the details of the, uh, building is, you know, whether it's, uh, we'll see if it's gonna be homes, do they have homes, we'll be talking, uh, dare I say, uh, you know, uh, more homes of sorts, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, because I didn't do the initial. But during the, you know, executive, uh, excuse me, the Economic Development Committee, they talked about discussing, we bought this piece of property for $3 million, some 20 years ago. And now we're selling it for a million and a half or so, that was the cost, almost a dollar value at the time.
That's incorrect.
Okay, well, it was interesting to discuss whether the value of the bids that was, if you were.
I don't want to answer you, because I hope it'll put it out for bid.
Go ahead.
It's funny, can I answer one question, your first question about what the development looks like? Technically, someone could bid as long as it's over 55, but they have to show this board the type of development it is. Home, homes, I doubt, don't know. Single family, duplex, I don't know. We're leaving it open so that they can decide the most responsive bid.
And there's a commercial component.
And there's a commercial component that has to service the over 55 as well as the home. So. It's not a private, relentless, so.
Right, I think it would be interesting, you know, when the individual identity, I mean, there wasn't a meeting, meeting I think it stayed. I think it should be out yet. I think you find that those numbers are accurate.
Maybe, I, I don't know what people said at that meeting, but that's not.
It can, so, so, I believe it was $3.2 million we were paying for, starting on this side, all the way down the hill up to the other side there. So, and, so what we're looking, the only piece we're talking about here in the Old Way District is this side on hips.
Right.
So it's not the full piece. At $3.2 million, we excruciatingly only paid for that piece of property. However, it was brought to the town, of course, but whatever, and then it came in. Um, and I don't know that you'd ever recruit that kind of money, even if you sold the whole thing there, uh, back out. However, the other side is still available for sale or for use. We do have some, uh, revenue coming in due to the.
I have it.
I'm sorry.
So we actually, yeah, projected, starting in 2021, we could bring in as much as $200,000 a year for just the solar piece that we developed in the back. So if you can imagine, those agreements are 20 years with a 10-year at the end. So, I mean, we make the money back alone, not just the solar piece.
And, and that they're also observing holding space and protecting wetlands. And there's a protected buffer along Milford Street. So they really did a good job of trying to get what they wanted from that, and this is just hanging there, I guess. I don't.
Well, thank you, I mean, that was, and I appreciate the detail you gave with that, because I think that makes a difference. And I think when you're presenting this to the town, if that information is not made clear.
Yeah.
It's kind of difficult, because, you know, I mean, you know, people are very busy, as you, as you all know.
Yep.
And when you talk about numbers, you know, if you're not a numbers person, those, they get a little confused.
I think also the, the important thing is that when you get word willing, you pick a, a developer with a number, town meeting has to vote on. Right. They don't like the number.
But, but I, I, I completely understand what, 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 what Paul is saying here, is that we're asking this Old Way District and the fact that there, there is a misconception out there, a possible misconception out there, that we're selling it for a million two and we paid a million three, two, but we're not. We're, we, there's no number attached to it yet because they haven't get the bids in, right? We already have revenues generated from the solar piece, which are, what, like you said, are more gonna cover costs.
Well, if the solar deals last as long as they're contracted to do 25 years, 25 years, so 2040 they would end, we'd make over $5 million on just the solar piece, okay? That's. we'd make over five million dollars on just the solar piece, okay, that's.
So then, so again, that was, that kind of covers the cost and the lending a little bit, but we're not, and again, we still have a little bit more development. Um, another piece to develop across the driving, as well as this piece to be able to develop, but there's a two-hundred-foot buffer that runs along, uh, sixteen, which then spreads into the whole muddy brook, um, arena and that whole pine, pine knob that's over there, all that is in the tech, so.
The, the only other question I have is, is, you know, I, I, you know, I, I, a few years ago, I became the, let me age fifty-five for that. Uh, you know, I haven't walked the property, but I do see it as a bit of a deep one.
Yep.
Uh, just going down Route sixteen, you know, it's a deep find there. It's not exactly in my eyes, but, you know, I'm just a, you know, observer. A property that you find would be conducive to, you know, a fifty-five age community, it's just my opinion about it. You know, I think, and I hope that with this discussion and with the details that have been divided here, it's lots of money-wise, as far as, you know, you guys doing something to, to raise revenue, which is exactly what you need to do, which is what we're looking for from a town, uh, citizenry, if you will. I think you're doing the right thing, just think that some of these, you know, this property in particular, what you're doing, I'm not sure it's gonna be the best.
You know, I, I can say that I a hundred percent agree with you, but based upon the will of the residents of this town and what they told us over the years that they'd like to see developed there, rather than a big box store, rather than this is worse, a thirty B, or this is what everyone seems to be in agreement they can support. And so that's how we got here, and we.
So I understand that's twenty-one acres area, but.
About.
And I thought I read something about something, something for fifty-two dollars.
Correct.
And I, I know some.
That, that one, that one is subsidized, but yes, it's also fifty-five.
Okay, so, again, just in my own opinion, I know it's just kind of free for me, I mean, that is a very flat area, it's a walking community into the senior center. I mean, you see the combination here, it's a winning opportunity.
You should, you should come in and I'll show you a map, so then you, that's, we would love to develop that, but muddy brook runs right behind there and the cost of building a bridge to access that big piece of parcel in the back, we've been working on coming in from the top, it's, yes, we would love to do that.
Although, although that, that, and I, I know specifically because I live, it was definitely a grid. It's not as drastic as you think when you get into the field.
Right.
And with custom fills, you can definitely adjust that out, that, and, and maybe make easily accessible rates down to different levels and, and the, the developer will be able to do that and, I mean, and I would hope that given that they're an over fifty-five development, have that kind of set in mind. But I will say, there is a couple of steep spots, but in the most part, especially as you get more towards the back, it does this, um, which, which kind of behind mine also.
Yeah, I can add, when we, we did the request for information and we had four developers that started to get interest, too hung in there, and they all said that they would design it so that they would use that slope in the back for the well, for well protection, and it would also protect the brook, and that they do use the upper piece probably with some fill to make the developer.
As you come down the top path, you can bring it to the, anyway.
You know, you have any other interests, because we have a lot of boards and commissions, we love.
Yeah, we can talk about this. It'd be, it'd be a haul sometime.
Yeah.
Well, I was interested in the, in the Economic Development Committee, I spoke with the team and, uh, you know, it seemed like they were all some good, uh, they had some good ideas, you have some good ideas.
You may, you may have been, we're about to have five seats on the select board in May.
You know, I, I, listen, I know we have a challenge, we have a lot of challenges in the town, we're a small town, not a lot of commercial opportunities. Um, and, uh, you know, uh, hopefully the townspeople know that, you know, and we have a lot of challenges with costs. And, you know, Mike, as you know, and as you know me, uh, I've been here a couple of times, we do a couple of, uh, town meetings, particularly when it's related to the budget, and, uh, you know, I just think we need to look at, uh, you know, we have these constraints, these revenue constraints, uh, commercial development is small. You know, costs are, you know, are particularly, those are where we focus in. And if we're building our FTEs, our housing, that's gonna be challenging, that's where you're gonna see challenges from, from the residents.
That overhead lasts forever.
That, you know. Well, thank you, thank you, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Next, I'll, well, thank you, this is, I guess, the line in the background. When, when it comes to the, to the meeting next week, um, I just wanna be sure that we have a good map that we'll be able to put on the screen, a map of, a layout of the property and, and, and just, as, as, as Colm alluded, you know, there's three different parcels, right? And then to say, listen, you know, this is, this has got the solar in the back, this is the conservation restriction.
Good idea.
And we've got this, and just so you know, here's the third screen, here's the piece we're talking about, and then if we can have, I mean, I've got a, a, I'm, I'm sure you do, to my, a, a wireless pointer, so that we can actually, somebody. I will do it. I have the map, but I don't have it to go to that other property, so I'll make one that's all inclusive.
Yeah.
And I can talk about some of it, but a lot of what he's asking, you guys have to answer that.
We, you will.
And we'll be, and I discuss, we'll make sure that, that we'll be able to answer his questions.
And also, we need to make sure that we're covering the piece about future municipal use, because that comes up every time. And future municipal use can be tax revenue that we're generating, that is a, that is an approved use, okay? So we don't need it forever, we built a police station, the schools are all set, let's.
Well, and I think just for the, for the identification, this, this recording with people watching it later, at the time, the thought was that this was not going to be the, was not going to be the police station, and that was gonna be in all that place, and what we did in the meantime is the townspeople decided they wanted to keep the historic building, turn it into a police station. And, you know, we've got forty, fifty years between Meticon and, you know, regional dispatch and talks about regional lockups and, you know, this property is gonna last us well past our lifetime, same thing with fire and highway. So, you know, the, we've already taken care of the contingencies. We're, we're not gonna need that for, for what you mentioned, suggested would be a first use of that top piece.
Let's go.
Right, so that's my story.
Thank you, Jack.
Sticking to it, I guess.
Best break we ever got.
Wow.
That's how I keep it posted.
Need to get it to you. Any other projects?
I was just gonna say, maybe you wanted to say, or something, oh, that's a day.
Thanks.
That's it tomorrow.
I think I'm gonna get it.
I'll be right there.
Well, just, you know, that's all you. That's you.
Tomorrow is the case, I appreciate it, I'm very much, and I think, just I can go on and say, like, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Move ten years to executive session for this three national object, thirty-one, seven, twenty-one, eight, three, and special editor, the second, our, we're heading out, giving you a vote, two seventy-two.
Just read them all.
I'm just having a time, two seventy-two, Masco, please, United, I'll see you, I have a vote, Kennedy eight. Also, the first student to conduct this, like a party session, I'm, I'm using the two to do. Discussing with the check session, the individual party, we can be only two, Jared, vote on this. Say. I'll be there.
Be there.
All right.
So I'll be there.
Really. Thank you.
Good night, Cindy.
Thanks.
She's waiting for five seconds.
She's up, right. Oh, oh, it's Mike. Thanks for coming, everybody.